Welcome, welcome to our first session of the Schools in Session, a series of workshops on trauma-informed approaches and practices to steer into and through the school year. Let us not be known in our region for short-sentence titles of events and learning opportunities. I want to welcome you to the first of our series. We are in Workshop One, which is a study session to ground us in shared language. We're going to be rolling up our sleeves, literally, and studying and sitting with SAMSA's Updated Practical Guide for Implementing a Trauma-Informed Approach. My name is Leora Shehers. I'm based in the Bay Area in California. I'm the facilitator and the host for this whole series and the facilitator for today. I'm very excited. This is the first of a six-part series, y'all. This is the first part of a six-part series on trauma-informed practices in the school year. It is March twentieth or March twenty-first, if you're in the Pacific Islands. I just want to name, like, we know this time of year is really crunchy. It's full. It's where people, y'all, me, we feel exhausted. We're ready for spring break. Graduation's coming. Testing happens. It's just a full time. So it's a little bit of a stretch ask to move, bring us into a learning experience while we're leading a lot. And I acknowledge that. And this is a series that invites us into accessing different kinds of ways to learn about trauma-informed approaches. So as someone who designed this series, I just want to offer that each session is really unique in topic and in type. And that's for us to actually live into the experience of a trauma-informed adult learning experience where you can get choice and voice. Some of you might really love to do text study, which is today and also Part Five, Session Five. Some of you want a more coaching space, that's Session Six. Some of you want more evidence-based clinical grounding, that's Session Three. Some of you want practical ways that you can adapt trauma-informed practices into bullying interventions and counseling, school counseling practices, Sessions Two and Four. So you can come to all the sessions. You can come to Summer One. And the reason that we're starting today with the guide is to, again, create a foundational and shared language so that we can kick off the series knowing what we're talking about when we, when we're talking about the principles of safety or transparency or collaboration and mutuality. So, um, welcome to the sessions, one of six sessions. So today, we are going to start with our, our overview and our welcome. Um, we're going to have a moment in a, in a second to live into our connector and to really think about what does it mean in this moment to be trauma-informed for us? And what might we need it to mean looking forward as a call-in, a collective call-in? And then we'll get to the main meat or tofu of today. We'll get to the study session where we will look, and it should say the 2023 Practical Guide, um, because this was published in 2023 Practical Guide for Implementing a Trauma-Informed Approach. And many of you know that the SAMSA, the original SAMSA Guide was published in 2014. So this is a ten, almost ten-year update. And I'm going to be going through what is similar and also what has been updated. Uh, so we'll have some small group breakout. We'll have time for a whole group integration. And like I said, um, we'll close with a little bit of pad time for us to unmute, share out, uh, and, and not have to navigate the recordings. Okay. I'm gonna invite you to take a breath, roll your shoulders. My left shoulder feels real crunchy right now. Um, I'm practicing a new thing, which is sitting down while facilitating. Usually I'm standing up. So we'll see how this goes. I might ditch it for the rest of the five sessions. We'll see. Okay. So colleagues, I don't know if you know this, but it's March twenty-four already. I can't even believe. I'm going to just take a moment for us to think about, what does it meant to be trauma-tran- what has it meant? And what does it mean in this moment of this time in our lives to be trauma-informed? And what might we need it to mean looking forward? Just want to take a quiet reflection moment. This is a padlet that is going to be the holder and the container of notes from all of our series so that if you are not able to come to one session or the other, you have access to this. And you'll be able to see notes and ahas and takeaways and resources from all the sessions. That's the overview. More into is Session One. So you'll see at the very top where it says the connector. It says, "March 2024, what is it meant to be trauma-informed and what might we need it to mean looking forward?" And I'm going to invite you to click on that link in the padlet. And then where it says, "Add comment," you can click your comment and you can be anonymous or not, and we'll get to see some of your answers. So I see that one of us wrote, "Being trauma-informed means to be just as informed and healing-centered." We have another colleague who wrote, "It means protecting our queer youth." Okay, so there's this concept of aware. And then I want to invite us to think about, what does that actually mean for us as school mental health leaders, adjacent humans, educators? I might just say educators for this whole session as a catch-all. What does it mean to be aware of something? And what is the work that we have to do to be aware of it? Being aware of experiences outside of our own and self-reflection. So what you're naming in this moment is the internal awareness, external compassion, and the knowing that there is a constant invisible or visible relationship between all the different spheres of relationship of self, family, community, society, globe. Understanding that we bring our prior experiences to current feelings, actions, and attitudes. And understanding that trauma is a spectrum and that what was traumatic to one may not be traumatic to another. Stop naming others' trauma. Okay, so that is a colleague of ours who's saying, "Just because an event was an event doesn't mean that it's related to trauma." Right? We know that, um, that, for example, adverse childhood experiences aren't always traumatic. You could have an A score of ten and you may not walk this world feeling like you're living with trauma because your experiences were seen and held and that you were witnessed with belonging and dignity by a caring adult usually. Or conversely, you could have an A score of one and walk this world feeling like you're walking through the world with a lot of trauma because it has not been witnessed, seen, or repaired. Okay, so we want to make sure that we're clear that just because of the event, it doesn't always translate to the label of trauma. You will have this access to this padlet forever. So you can go into it, read it, sit with it. And I'm gonna invite us to take a moment of matter reflection. Like, what were colleagues' responses that felt resonant? Maybe what were some new call-ins that we hadn't considered yet before? And I'm noticing from the data, from the answers in the room, that some of us are in a space of action, prevention, interruption, uh, repair. I was trying to think of a more active word for repair. Someone will give it to me in the chat. And so, and some of us are in that space of awareness and reflection and, and internal work. So it's a good marker to know where we are in this conversation. Colleague is reminding us that the A score is a screening device. And I would even offer that the, that the original authors of the, of the Adverse Childhood Experiences questionnaire never intended it even to be a screening device. They intended to be a conversation facilitation starter. Uh, and so it, it got morphed into a screening advice, but it's actually quite, it's much more about having uh, conversations that can get us to understand that, again, the signals of behavior is just that and that there's unmet need potentially beyond and under behavior. This is making me think, and you're welcome to put this in the feedback, that we might need to have a whole other session of unpacking the adverse childhood experiences phenomena in 2024, because there's a lot of work that, that we need to both correct, intervene, and then redirect. Let's get back, um, and new in the guide. So here we are in 2024. And like I mentioned, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration in 2014 released its first trauma-informed care guide. And I want to, I want to offer that in this update, here are a couple highlights that I particularly appreciate and that, um, we should all be aware of, that we should all be aware of, right? So the first is that, um, this guide in 2024 has a specific focus on lived experience that ten years ago was not necessarily in the dominant culture of trauma-informed cares dialogue. That there is a specific focus on centering people who walk this world either with different mental health lenses or different abilities than the dominant culture or the norm. Um, and it calls us as educators and school mental health leaders to think very differently, or more intentionally, about centering young people who have experienced, um, the systems of child welfare, of kinship, of, um, home insecurity, of food insecurity, and how we might, um, really take a quiet and radical approach to listening in so that we can lean out and they can lead forward. The second is that there is a specific focus on the social determinants of health. This is, uh, really a beautiful invitation for us to think about um, and to appreciate that SAMSA, as a federal agency, is calling us into understanding that trauma is, yes, experienced as an individual, but, um, but nested, nested in social dynamics of both access to healing and inaccess to healing. And that we, as school mental health leaders, have to be really, really attuned into where we are and how we are leading the work. So are we only focusing on the individual student? Or we understand there are, um, there are, there are, there's nested need, nested need. Right? So social determines of health. Um, and then the third piece that there's a new focus on is a real, um, uh, and grateful to see focus on what we're learning about post-traumatic stress disorder. And, um, and even that is being reconsidered in 2024. Is it, is it a disorder? Is there ever post? And what are we learning about PTSD, knowing that it surfaced in, uh, in, after the Vietnam War? And there's a lot of learning around PTSD that we've done since. Um, so those are the three new folk I. And yes, I said folk I, and I feel very proud of saying folk I instead of focuses. Um, and I want to, I want to talk about the, the other two. The other two is that this guide focuses and offers us into studying so, the socio-ecological model that includes the levels of trauma experiences. And these were slightly touched on, but not explicitly named in 2014. And they are now, which is phenomenal. Uh, and by the way, probably, and I think I know Lee, you to SAMSA leaning into leaders with lived experience, calling us in to do this work better, right? So I want to, I want to offer, um, that this guide in 2024 notes there's specific language related to trauma from racism, trauma from discrimination, trauma from sexual assault, trauma from homophobia, trauma from, um, intimate partner violence, IPV, and traumas related to refugee experiences. Um, and I, I want to offer that it will invite us into a stretch as leaders that if you are seeing some of these call-ins from SAMSA and you go, "Oh, I actually haven't done a lot of work understanding the relationship between homophobia and trauma and what our young people might be feeling," that might be then, if you get anything out of today, that might be your walk away, right? Or the intersections of racism and discrimination and trauma. The last piece is that there are, there are specific goals for this guide. And they, the high, the most, the kind of eagle-eye level goal that all of us are sitting with in this moment is to be in shared language. It's one of the most operational practices of being a trauma-informed colleague is sitting with someone and saying, "When you say X, what do you mean by that? When I say X, what do I mean by that?" Right? Many of us use the word equity and we mean really different things when we're using that word. Or many of us use the word trauma and we're actually using really different, really different, um, means for that word. And then we're creating policies and practices based on diverse definitions and sometimes conflicting definitions. So this guide is for us to be, is to start to study some shared language or the offering of shared language. It's also a guide, um, uh, that helps us think about this work, not just as an individual level, but at a systemic level. So if we are at a, for example, if we're a project-aware staff member, advancing wellness and resilience in education, or if we're at a district or if we're at a county, it is calling us into that trauma-informed work isn't just about trauma treatment with individuals, but the way in which we're experiencing, um, systems collaborating, domains, talking to one another, um, finances, being trauma-informed, right? So it invites us into systemic conversation. And then the last piece is big, which is that it really encourages leadership to adopt trauma-informed approaches. That's what TIA stands for at the organizational level. So again, not just social workers doing the work and not just counselors doing the work, but, um, everyone holding this work together. This is from page one, and many of you are familiar with the four Rs. But again, because we want to, um, live and experience shared language, I want to take time to walk us through a couple pieces. And then we'll get to roll our sleeves up, um, and go into different sections of the guide. So, uh, according to this guide, and it is a guide that informs a lot of our work, that a trauma-informed approach is both about a system or a person or program realizing, realizing the impact of trauma. And this is the, this is the part that we sometimes forget, the paths of recovery. It's being rooted in understanding recovery and recovery-oriented ways of leading. Who is steeped in the recognition of the signs and symptoms of trauma in clients and families and staff and others involved in the system. So again, that goes back to how we all talked about trauma-informed care at the beginning, this awareness. Knowing, by the way, as our other colleague called us in, that trauma is very subjective in how it shows up. And then the last two Rs, it's calling us into being responsive. So with that knowledge, with that awareness, what do we do with it? How do we then rework our policies, rework our practices, rework the way that we approach one another to actively resist re-traumatization? And that last chunk, y'all, for us in school and in health, I personally believe is our biggest call into action. It's not just knowing. So what are you going to do with that knowledge? So that we prevent and radically, um, do some necessary interruptions so that we don't keep harming and harming and harming and harming each other. The, when we're talking about trauma-informed approaches, we, we know that this lands on three different levels. For some of us, we are in the trauma treatment space. We are, that's kind of the tier-two and very much specifically the tier-three space. We're in evidence-based or community-defined practices. We're doing groups. We are practicing second step. We're like really implementing trauma treatment with young people, um, C-bits, et cetera. So that is the, on the green, that's the most specific form of trauma treatment. Trauma-informed care is the way in which we hold ourselves and the work, um, generally and broadly across domains and systems. But this piece on the left, you'll see that I went right to left. This piece on the left is also about our own mental framework. How we literally arrive at our work, knowing that humans carry human experiences. And how we need to arrive to rehumanize ourself and school conditions that most allow our young people and ourselves and our colleagues to be seen and held with belonging and dignity and safety. This is from the Missouri Department of, of Mental Health and Partners way back long ago. And I just, I really appreciate this call-in. It says, "The trauma-informed resilience, uh, trauma-informed and resilience-oriented implementation is not just a program model that can be implemented and monitored by a checklist. It's a profound paradigm shift in knowledge, perspective, attitudes, and skills that continues to deepen and unfold over time." It's that if we were in grad school or undergrad or whatever, high school, I want to bold and highlight that profound paradigm shift that all of you, um, are really steeped in and holding on to. Okay. I'm going to take the next couple minutes for us to do a study into the practices of the intersections of trauma-informed approaches with cultural humility. We were talking earlier about the, the intersections of awareness and action. And particularly because this guide is calling us into holding trauma and racism, trauma and homophobia, trauma and xenophobia. That it is necessary for us to take a moment to do some cultural humility work before we then talk about the domains and the principles. Okay, so we're on page ten of the guide. And SAMSA offers us that trauma-informed approaches begin with cultural humility at all levels, individual organizations, and systems. So if cultural humility is the foundation for any trauma-informed approach, right? And our colleague Conwar Pal DeLeewell at the Rias Youth Center always says, "If it's not, it can't be trauma-informed if it's not racially just. That's it, period." I want to take a moment to reflect on what cultural humility can mean for us and how it can be the buttress or the, what's another word for buttress? The root of our trauma-informed work, right? So on the left-hand side, in the blue, you'll see that, um, these, that back in nineteen ninety-eight, two, uh, two physicians of color, Turbilan and Marie Garcia, called in particularly the healthcare industry to rethink the way that healthcare providers were providing services to clients. And on the left-hand side, you'll see that they said, "Enough with not just being culturally aware. Don't just be culturally, be responsive. We like, we need us to be culturally humble as well." And they offer that cultural humility is the following, "A personal lifelong commitment to self-evaluation and self-critique." Let's be clear. They're not offering that cultural humility means self-criticism, self-blame, self-shame. They're offering self-critique, which means for us to be sharply aware of our relationship and proximity to power, power over, and when we're enacting power over someone versus power with someone. And that recognition of power dynamics and imbalances and a desire to fix those power imbalances and develop partnerships with people and groups who advocate for others. So this absolutely connects to the centering of people and young people and families with lived experiences that SAMSA is calling us into in 2024 as trauma-informed practitioners. And the last piece of cultural humility is the, um, not just embrace, but the, um, dive into institutional accountability. So this is something that we don't always talk about in the work of school mental health. How do we, as school mental health practitioners, providers, schools, and school systems and conditions, re-traumatize our young people every day through our policies and practices? And where might there be some institutional accountability? So that a trauma-informed school isn't just doing, embracing the principles, but is also really doing some interrogation with how and when we might be dehumanizing our families and, and, you know, people who walk through our hallways. So I wanted to pause and, and look at these two reflection questions that I'm offering us in this moment to dig into our own cultural humility. The, the first question is the, is this, that when we don't know something, are we able to say that we don't know? I know that for many of us, we need to feel confident, either because of our maleness or whiteness or straightness or our access to wealth. We need to feel like we know and that we have expertise. And I invite us that part of this work is actually to be able to say, um, that I don't know, right? That I don't know, right? So when we don't know something, are we able to say that we don't know? Are we able to say, "I need to be a learner in this moment"? And then the question on the right is that, "What is our commitment to interrogating, examining, or addressing power inequities and imbalances in ourselves as individuals, as in our school and mental health systems, look like, feel like, and sound like? Look like, feel like, and sound like." So I'm just going to offer a quiet reflection moment. How often do we get the luxury of quiet reflection moment to kind of sit with those two questions? And invite you to think about in this moment, what do these questions bring up for you? What is our commitment to interrogating, examining, and addressing power inequities and imbalances in ourselves, as individuals, and our school mental health systems, look like, feel like, and sound like? And I might argue that that is the trauma-informed work in our schools. All right. So knowing that we're starting there with being able to say, "I may not know." Or that I'm being invited to interrogate, to interrupt, to step into action, not only awareness. On the screen here, you'll see that on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side, there are both principles of trauma-informed care. Um, and by the way, you'll see some new principles that, uh, were not part of the original principles in 2014. So, so I'm going to note those in a moment. And then the domains. Domains is, is just a way to say, there are ways that SAMSA is calling us in to implementing a trauma-informed approach in multiple areas in organizations and in agencies and in the work. We know, we, we've got some new, some new principles, um, that also have been expanded in the field. So at the bottom, you'll see that link to trauma-informed Oregon. And there's a, a relationship between those, those two, uh, between the SAMSA guidance and trauma-informed Oregon. And I want to offer the following about the word safety. That safety is the foundational trauma-informed principle. It is the baseline for it all. And that safety is a construct. What safety means to me is not the same of what safety means to someone else. What adults in schools think is safe is usually very different than what young people think is safe. And so if we are that, holding with a power analysis of who has power over, we might need to re-weight that power and sit with young people and say, "What does safety mean to you? How might our policies and practices reflect what creates safe conditions for you in a way that they may not know?" If you see on the right-hand side, that, um, the invitation, that the trauma-informed approach is universal. It doesn't just sit in the Department of Behavioral Health. It doesn't just sit with mental health practitioners. It is an everyone, all hands on deck, all in, because we are all impacted. Uh, we are all impacted by the work. I want to take a moment to talk about these domains of trauma-informed systems with approaches and outcomes and what that can mean for us in leading school systems and communities. You'll see on the left-hand side that these are leadership approaches. So I want to just go back for a second. I want to, I'm going to just do, have a teaching moment, right? So here I am, I'm in the blue. I'm talking about the domains, the different pillars of trauma-informed work. And in this next piece, what I've done is I've separated out, I've combed out, what are leadership approaches? Right? What are leadership approaches and then leadership outcomes related to principles versus practices and products? So like, where might you see? So some of this is thinking about, how might I need to invest in the, in the knowledge, skills, and dispositions of my team? Do we need to spend more time understanding the intersections of intimate partner violence and sexual assault and misogyny and homophobia in our school community? Do we need to spend time training that up? Do we need to spend time holding space for, um, some trauma that we as a staff experience? And that because we are not checking our own stuff, we are consistently re-traumatizing other people? On the right-hand side, we see that there are some tangible ways that we can then have kind of like surface-level indicators. Like, if I walked into your place of work, what I would see as indicators that you're doing the trauma-informed care approach, work, and treatment. And that's in how you're, uh, evaluating yourselves and each other, um, that you are, you have tangible policies which are just belief systems written on paper. Uh, and your way that you are screening and assessing and treating. That actually speaks to the earlier chat conversation around adverse childhood experiences. I'm just, I'm taking a moment to unpack that there are both leadership approaches and leadership outcomes when we map on trauma-informed approaches in our systems-level work. And that I want to be very clear, there is a right, there is no wrong door for this. If you want to start with policy, that then might surface ways in which you need to do more cross-sector collaboration, gorgeous. If you want to start with what kinds of professional development and learning spaces you need to hold in order to then reimagine the way that you're holding each other accountable via policy, beautiful. No wrong door. Someone is offering this gem in chat, so I'm going to pause. Someone's offering the gem. We can attend or ask people to participate in training after training, but if there's no internalization of the principles, progress may be slower or not happen. And I might offer that it might be that data in itself, that there's not shift in behavior, might actually be an invitation for you to rethink the way that you're holding learning as a, in, in adult communities. It may be a way for us to say, "Maybe the training approach isn't the way." Maybe there needs to be more facilitation or embodied approach. Or maybe there's a, there's something happening in my, in, with the trainer itself. Maybe the training about trauma-informed work isn't trauma-informed. Happens all the time. Maybe we're talking about trauma, but we really need to be holding grief. So I would invite us to think about that. Um, okay, this is the current section. This is the current session. The other sessions don't focus on this guide. And you're welcome to email me too, if you would like a private coaching session on the guide or something. Like I said earlier, just like there's enough trauma in the world to go around, there's also enough time for us to be trauma care providers and employees and humans. There's equally enough time for us to sit with this big guide and this big work. And I want to invite us, that if we felt like, I don't have, this is overwhelming, this is a lot of text, to take bite-sized pieces. This is, one of the hopes that I had for this session is to offer you all a way that you might actually engage your teams in studying the guide. And you're more than welcome to ping me about a way to do tech study with colleagues. It is a really wonderful way for us to be our own guided teachers, to set up with a start and then move into some tech study. The biggest pieces that I, I really want to invite us, this might seem a little funny to do, but it's really intentional, is to close with some affirmations, and that this work is really big. This invitation for cultural humility work is really big and necessary. And our young people need it from us. The young person inside of us needs it for us and from us. So I want to invite us in this very moment to find one affirmation sentence stem that you need in your trauma-informed work internally or externally. And to maybe take on an affirmation. It might mean that you type, I trust myself. I know what I need to do for myself as a learner and myself as a leader. Or it might be, I am impacting the world just because I'm in it. I'm a, I'm a person with lived experience, and even that in itself is the greatest teacher of them all. So I want to offer a moment after our big session of talking about big ideas and a, and a large call-in for a moment for us to affirm ourselves in this work. Just a reminder that one of the biggest actors in trauma's toolkit is to take away our sense of steadiness and trust in our own knowledge, wisdom, and knowing of our bodies, of our communities, of our cultures, of our ways of being. So one of the wonderful ways that we can reclaim our own power with ourselves is saying, I trust myself over and over and over again. Thank you for offering affirmations. I'll read this last one because it's so powerful. I'm good at helping others to get whatever it is they are going through because I have lived experience. And it may not be in the fancy SAMSA guide language, and it may not be cited, and it may not be quoted, but it is the work. This is the work. So again, start wherever you feel the most ease and the most joy. If it's with a physical safe space, if it's studying the principles, if it's thinking about a screening tool as a conversation guide and not as a way to coerce or manipulate, all those moves are important. All those moves are important. Okay. So that is closing our first session, y'all. That's closing our first session. And I want to invite us again that every Wednesday for the next five weeks, the same time, same kind of virtual place, we'll be studying a different trauma-informed intervention, approach, or way of being in care. Personally, I recommend coming to all, even if they're totally outs, out of your realm, because it's such a good way for us to try on different language and to see different ways of approaching the work. So next week, we'll be with Valerie White on trauma-informed bullying interventions. The individual at the relational, at the systemic level, Valerie used to work for a Los Angeles Unified School District. And she's a beautiful teacher, so please join us next week. And I want to invite you that at the end of this deck, there are tons of resources, tons of resources for you to wop through. There's also the padlet. So there's, again, we are lifelong learners. There's so much room for this work. Lifelong learners and lots of learning about cultural humility if you are interested in it. And again, what we hope is that this whole series is not just about trauma-informed school practices, but you experience it for yourself as a learner, as an adult, your own choice and voice. And I want to offer you, and this will be sent in email, but we have so many beautiful events coming up. On Monday, we are gathering to hold space and name what happens when we want to witness young people who are neurodivergent and who are experiencing police violence, particularly in light of Ryan Gaynor's death in San Bernardino in our region. So please come this Monday if you'd like to be held in space. Of course, you're welcome to join any of our other programming. And that last one at the bottom is a special one. We're hosting a completely free full-day symposium on harm reductions, intersections with mental health approaches. So please, please, please check us out, May 7th. Anyway, lots of goodness. And with that, I am going to invite us to end the recording.